Welcome to the I've called a order, the November 12th meeting of the Noblesville Common Council at 7:00 PM. If you could all rise and if you could have scout pack 114, 104, or you just want to stay out there. Yeah, come up here. Scout, scout pack 114, scout pack 104, girl scout troop 01804. All scouts, so you can face the flag. I'll give you the signal. Is everybody ready? Did we ever be ready? Okay, when you're ready.
For the allegiance to the love of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Have their parents get their picture here while we were up here. Watch her on face that way. Maybe I want to see a picture. Now let's stand up.
No. Maybe our waist is.
It's really my belly. Ms. Lee, could you call the roll?
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. Wilds.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. President, you have four.
Thank you. Could I have an approval of our minutes from our October 29th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the minutes from our October 29th meeting. There's a hand vote. All the favor raise your right hand. Nine oh. Approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda in a second. There's a hand vote. All the favor raise your right hand. Nine oh. Mayor's comments.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. It's great to be with you tonight. I, a few quick updates before we move on to some exciting events tonight. First of all, I love having a council chambers full when people aren't mad at us. So this is wonderful. This is great news. But a few quick updates and whoever's doing the Rhodes Committee may go over this anyways, but just a quick reminder that actually the 10th Street Roundabout opened late last night, which we're really excited about. That's one of the final pieces of Phase One of the Pleasant Street project. For anyone here in the audience or watching online that do not know about the Pleasant Street project, please visit reimaginepleasantst.com to learn more and wake up from your 40-year slumber. So I will tell you that will be, will remain open throughout the project, starting in the first quarter of 2025. We'll be closing from 11th Street kind of to the east down to 16th Street as they work on, along Pleasant Street as they work on Phase Two of that project. But we were excited. I went and drove around it several times today just for the heck of it. It's nice to have 10th Street open. I appreciate the public's patience with that. One of the last remaining pieces that we're working through our summer construction season is for those on the far west side. I'm sure Mr. Boyce and Mr. Davis hear quite a bit about this project and that is the Little Chicago Road Bridge that's being rehabbed. This is a partnership with our friends at Hamilton County to not only redo the bridge deck there, but also to add a pedestrian walking path along that bridge. Will be a huge infrastructure upgrade, especially for those that do live and commute over there on the west side. Of course, it's been a huge disruption for those that are currently living through it. The original plan was to have that open by Thanksgiving. I will tell you that a few months ago, we announced that would be the end of the year, that that project will be open and that that still remains true today. There hardly a day goes by that I don't have some resident asking me a rumor about next year, 2025. It is still on schedule to be open by the end of 2024. And again, I really appreciate all those, especially that live over in the harbors area, who have practiced some patience with us in that project. So wanted to point that out. Now I get to introduce a group of fine young men and their coaches tonight. I think one of the best moments and the reason why all of us do our job is to make Noblesville the great place that it is to live, work, and play, and to inspire the next generation to stay here long term. I always say that is the reason why I do my job is so my kids are so convinced that Noblesville is the greatest place, that they never want to leave. And part of that is honoring some of the young men and women who do great things. We saw earlier today, leading the Pledge of Allegiance, some great Cub Scouts that just give you great hope in the future of this community. And I get to introduce you tonight to a group of football players who have worked really, really hard to win the first ever championship for the Noblesville Grinders. As, if anyone has been around for any amount of time in Noblesville and have ever spoken to Steve Dillinger or Steve Nation, who I know are staring me down during these remarks, you know the history of the Grinders. You know the amount of time and effort. Many of us played in the Grinders or were grinder adjacent, have had kids that have played through the Grinders. But this group of young men that I'm going to introduce here shortly are this year's 2020-24 I E F A champions because they were victorious over Westfield. And I can tell you anytime we beat any other Hamilton County affiliate just makes my heart smile. So I'm going to embarrass myself and strip in front of you because I have a Grinders shirt on that I was given tonight. I practiced that due to the risk that could happen from that moment. I'm glad I got through it. But I want to introduce these players in front of you. Players, when I introduce your, when I say your name, I'm going to have you come up here to the front. We'll all line up. So stay up here. And then at the end, we'll be able to take a photo with everyone here on the council. So I'm going to dedicate this proclamation today to the hard work and commitment of players such as Tyler Hostetler. Zaden Stanner. Jed Fritz. Camden Jackson. Max Osborne. Ethan Howell. Connor Skelton. Caden Bierstrom. Jimmy Canada. Ian Rich. Reese Gibson. A.J. Gonzalez. Dawson Cornell. Everett L. London Rollins. Connor Simmons. Aiden Thornburg. Patrick Nicholson. King Hall. Austin Tomlinson. Max Schob. Evan McCain. Sebastian Nemeczek. Chase Lee. Noah Jones. Colin Triplet. Grant Hale. Gavin Seaman. Benjamin O'Rourke. Heston Aguilero. Glenn Hoffman. Brayden Couch. And Zane Gunn. I also would like to acknowledge coaches Jeremy Ely, Jeremy Hostetler, Jake Fritz, Rob Gunn, Nate John, A.J. Wilks, and Jake Skelton. I also want to bring up three titans of this institution. Steve Dillinger, Steve Nation, and Larry Radabutch as well, please. This amazing Noblesville football community packed the stands and were pivotal to the team's success. The community of Noblesville is proud of the 2024 Noblesville Grinder football team. So I, therefore Chris Jensen, Mayor of the City of Noblesville, the state of Indiana, do hereby proclaim November 12th, 2024 as Noblesville Grinder Football Day. Congratulations. All right, guys. We're squeezing and taking photos. We're going to sit back there by side. Squeezing, guys. Karen, it's a big Midwest, you know, I'll walk.
Give a big cheer. Three, two, one, two, three. Oh, come on.
All right, Grinders. You guys can head on out wherever you'd like. Want to go this way? Thanks, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it.
What age is the Grinders?
Fifteen, sixth grade. So again, Mr. President, I just want to thank you for allowing me that moment tonight. I wanted to point out too, one of our city councillors, Mike Davis, was a Grinders football player.
Fifty years ago.
Fifty-six years ago. I'm kidding. Fifty years ago. Fifty years ago. So again, I just think it's always great when we have a moment to acknowledge the next generation, all the great work that's doing. They represent Noblesville really well and wear that black and gold with pride. So with that, I think that's all the updates I have for you. Thanks for giving me the time to do that tonight.
Thank you. Congratulations on the roundabout, too. On to council committee reports. Rhodes, Todd Thurston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rhodes Committee met on the 1st of November. Present was myself and Pete.
And Brian Airman, too.
Brian was there as well. Talked about many of the projects that the mayor has already talked about, so I will skip over those. Couple I will point out. The NDOT projects, State Road 37 and 141st Street, that is, State Road 37 is going to go back to two lanes in each direction. Weather dependent, it should be there now. It's supposed to be the end of last week. State Road 37 through Noblesville, that's Greenfield Avenue to State Road 32. There will be a public information meeting on December 11th at 6 o'clock at Noblesville High School. Again, that is December the 11th at 6 o'clock at Noblesville High School. If you'd like more information on that, that would be a good opportunity for you to just see kind of what's going on, preliminary information regarding that project. State Road 37 and 186th Street, again, that using highway safety improvement funds, that is anticipated to be open by Thanksgiving. Pleasant Street, we talked about. That's pretty much the big news there. And I'll have to answer any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Thurston on the finance committee? Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met November 7th. Dave Johnson, Aaron Smith, Megan Wilds, and myself. Tom McDonald, Caitlin Kesner discussed an update for the quarterly financial reports, 2024 quarter three. And Wendy Stremloff from the Parks Department gave us an update for park programs and the annual status report for the parks. That and the claim socket does come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Davis?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the claims in second. There's a hand vote. All the favor raise your right hand. Again, we will pay our bills again. Counsel to hear a report from the Noblesville Preservation Alliance. Joshua Glassburn-Ruby.
Hi. Good evening, esteemed council members, Mr. President, and of course, everyone else here in the chamber tonight. First and foremost, I must thank you for being so understanding with my need to postpone this presentation. That decision was extremely difficult to make, but it was the right one. I had lost my voice and would have made for a very quiet 10 minutes. With that said, I stand before you tonight on behalf of Noblesville Preservation Alliance to express our deepest gratitude and appreciation for your unwavering support and dedication to preservation, to preserving the rich history, heritage, and overall charm of our beloved community. My name is Joshua Glassburn-Ruby and I am the newly hired executive director of Noblesville Preservation Alliance. In August, just three short months ago, I stepped into this role and I must say these past 90 days have been unique and exciting, to say the least. Our Board of Directors and I are diving headfirst into this new chapter of our history together, committed to preserving the many aspects that make our city so special, while at the same time, we are also working toward new and creative ways to expand on preservation as a whole, to include additional aspects that fall under that umbrella term. Noblesville Preservation Alliance strives to enhance the city's neighborhoods by advocating for and promoting unique cultural spaces, architectural treasures, and the survival of the very charm that has brought many new residents to this city. Our executive team, one of whom, Amy Coyle, our board president, is here today, and our Board of Directors, I cannot be more thankful to each and every one of them for supporting not only the voluntary needs of NPA, but also supporting me every step of the way these last few months. Not only do most of them work full-time jobs during the day and have families of their own, they also manage to find time to dedicate themselves to our mission, even when that means time away from home and their families. Our partnerships are crucial, crucial to our success. We truly could not achieve our goals without their unwavering support and assistance, nor could we provide, nor could we without the support of this city. Your dedication and hard work provide the foundation upon which we build our initiatives. And for that, we are truly thankful to not only you, but also to all of our volunteers, members, sponsors, generous contributors, and community partners. None of what we do will be possible without every organization on this list. Circling back to the city, the commitment to preservation by those in our local government, including yourselves, has been nothing short of exemplary. Through your efforts, we have seen the safeguarding of historic districts via ordinance number 26-05-2, as well as the revitalization of cherished structures via the more than $3 million of facade grants given generously to local businesses. Your vision and leadership have ensured that Noblesville will remain a place where history is not only remembered, but celebrated. 2024 has been an amazing year for collaboration. We took part in multiple partner events, and here are just a few of those that I would like to highlight this evening. Noblesville Main Street, we participated with Noblesville Main Street, our annual collaboration of Downtown Unseen and our annual Historic Home Tour. We also took part in the farmer's market and together we contributed a joint basket of goodies for Noblesville Creates Annual Gala. I would explain what Serve Week is, but I have a feeling everybody knows. We were so blessed this year that Serve came to Noblesville Preservation Alliance and painted our basement. As you can see, the before pictures are rather dark. The after pictures, it is very beautiful and much more bright. The after pictures, it is very beautiful and much more bright. The Front Porch Music Festival, that was an amazing experience. We hosted three bands on the porch of Preservation Hall this year, and I will admit, this was my first year attending, and it felt as if I'd been transported to New Orleans. Next year could not come quick enough. NPA designed and handed out History of Seminary Park cards to attendees at the Indiana P&amp;E Festival and participated as a location stop. Preservation Hall is also a continual stop on the P&amp;E Trail, which is that little plaque right there on the right that's in front of Preservation Hall. In December, we'll be collaborating with the city on Lights Over Seminary, as well as participating in the Holiday and Lights Parade. We have been also partnering with the library and the Hamilton County History Collaborative. NPA has set up information tables at various events, and we are also an active participant in the Hamilton County History Collaborative, which is a quarterly gathering of history-based organizations that share updates, ideas, and ways to lean on one another for support. NPA events that we have held this year, we have our fifth annual Flea Market. It's held on the first Saturday of June. You'll see that is how many participants we had and how many came through Preservation Hall. I had to do that transition there because it just fit right in with Noblesville Preservation Alliance Radio Theater, one of which I know that you know of. You might want to come back. It's getting pretty exciting. Getting ready for Miracle on 34th Street in December. I get to play for a gay lead. That'll be interesting. We also held our 37th Annual Historic Home Tour. Total homes, we had 12, and attendees, 472. Upcoming events in December, we have our annual Holiday Home Tour coming up on the 6th. Lights Over Seminary collaboration on the 6th as well, and yes, we will be able to pull off both. We will be participating in the Holiday and Lights Parade on the 7th, and our Miracle on 34th Street live radio show performances are the 12th, 13th, 14th, and 15th. We also have a few additional things in the works that we aren't quite ready to share yet, but you will find out. Year-to-date revenue as of 10/21/24. You can see that our three largest chunks of revenue come from Preservation Hall through rentals, through grants, as well as our home tour. Our year-to-date expenses as of 10/21/24, and the bulk of those are marketing, the Historic Home Tour, operating expenses, and Preservation Hall. Speaking of Preservation Hall, we have a breakdown here of the expenses there. Additional updates, this year, we took a giant leap to becoming a much more efficient and active in the community by bringing a part-time Executive Director on board in August. The doors are officially open. We are open during the day, Monday through Friday. The hours vary depending on schedule. We also opened our doors and there's an official cooling center on extreme heat multiple times this past summer. We have a brand-new website. We had a brand-new website built that went live in January, www.noblesvillepreservation.org. Our rental increase, this is a pretty big one. So far this year, we have seen our rental income more than quadruple, from a total of $2,627.50 to $11,750 as of yesterday. Plans for 2025, as much as I would love to dive extremely deep into this, I'll just hit the basic points because I know that I have 10 minutes. So we are going to hold our first annual gala in April. We are throwing around some concept ideas of what it might be like, but I'm leaning towards, hopefully, basically prom, standing for preserving remnants of memory, where everyone gets dressed as they would have at their own prom in their era, whether it be Molly Ringwald or Danny and Sandy and Rizzo. New programs and workshops. We plan to launch new public workshops on historic preservation, covering topics like preserving original aspects, preventing damage to woodwork, everything that falls within that. But we also plan to go beyond that, and as I mentioned earlier, the umbrella term of preservation. Preservation actually affects each and every one of our lives. People do not realize they are preservationists. We have a favorite shirt we save to make sure it stays good. We post a post on social media, "We're preserving a moment in our history." That history is going to go into the cloud, and 100 years from now, someone's going to read about you. So how do you want them to see you? What do you want your descendants to know? That's a way that we can expand outward into the community and assist people with. We want to collaborate more with our city officials, work closely to preserve the charm of Old Town, ensuring our legacy is passed on to future generations. Something that I had mentioned to Kate Baker, and we are going to talk about soon, is an expansion on the home tour in Downtown Unseen Weekend, looking at ways to expand it into being a full weekend of history-based festivities. This will boost local economy and tourism, of course. Community events, I will just go ahead and read those off the list. Preservation Hall restoration, we are continuing our efforts at preserving the interior of Preservation Hall. Newsletter, in 2025, we'll be rolling out our new newsletter, NPA Today, your local preservation publication. And there are additional plans in the works. If you'd like to know more about what those are, you can definitely call anytime or stop by and visit us. The sign says open, we're inside. So, in conclusion, which I just skipped over all of this that I had written down, I just want to say that we are truly excited about the future for our organization and our community. Together through collaboration and innovation, we can continue to foster a vibrant, engaged, and thriving Noblesville. Thank you for your time, your support, and your commitment to making our community a better place.
Thank you for being a great partner in this meeting. Counsel to consider ordinance 64-10-24 and ordnance authorizing the City of Noblesville, Indiana to fund taxable economic development revenue note, Series 2024, Kittle's Property Project, and approving and authorizing other action in respect thereto. Sarah Reed, where is Jim Kittle?
He is in Florida. I know. That's part of my presentation is unfortunately...
Will suffer through this.
He is not going to be here tonight, which is, I know, the reason that you are sad at the moment. But we do have Sawyer, Steve, Lindsay, and Jennifer, so he sent a whole contingent of representation here tonight. So if you have any questions after this, they are happy to answer those. Sarah Reed, Community Development Director, for the record. As this ordinance was presented to you on October 29th, I'd let you know that we would have some amendments this next time. So the amendments tonight include a maximum cost adjustment of the incentive, so we just defined that a little more clearly, and not to exceed cost of issuance is in there for, I believe it's $15,000. And the clarification was provided directly to the developer on commencement of the project and how that works with the ILP. So an entire paragraph was struck from the EDA. You'll see both a red line and a clean copy in your packets tonight. Really, that's the only changes that are before you, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Reed? Any questions for the Kittle team? With that, I would look for a motion to amend the ordinance.
Mr. President, I would move that we amend ordinance number 64-10-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to amend ordinance 64-10-24 as presented in a second. This is a hand vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 64-10-24 as amended.
Second.
Motion to approve, motion to approve ordinance 64-10-24 as amended, 64-10-24 as amended in a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wildes?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance 65-10-24 and ordinance approving an additional appropriation of the local road and street fund to provide funding for a shop truck for the street department. Tom McDonald.
Good evening, Tom McDonald. I'm the Deputy Financial Officer with the Office of Finance and Accounting, and this is a second reading for the purchase, an additional appropriation for the purchase of a street truck, of a shop truck by the street department. As a reminder, the purchase of this truck has been planned since the beginning of the fiscal year. It was initially planned to be funded or financed through the capital equipment lease program, but that financing had to be reprioritized for a different issue. So this request is to provide an additional appropriation for the same purpose. It would still be funded through the local road and street fund. Happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate the clarity in the last meeting that where you're not, there's no more, no, it's actually savings. Okay.
That's correct. Flight savings through interest.
There are no questions. I will open the public hearing for ordinance 65-10-24.
Mr. President, seeing no one in front of the public come forward, I would move that we close the public hearing for ordinance number 65-10-24.
Second.
Motion to close, motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 65-10-24 in a second. This is a hand vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 65-10-24.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 65-10-24 in a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wildes?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance 66-11-24 and ordinance amending ordinance 02-01-23 for the Retreat at Moore's Plan Development regarding subdivision sign placement.
Move to introduce. Second.
Amy Stephens.
Thank you. Before you is an amendment to the Moore's Plan Development, or Retreat at Moore's Plan Development ordinance that was heard by the Plan Commission and recommended for approval at their October 28th meeting. What this ordinance amendment does is it allows for the placement of a subdivision sign that does not meet the required 10-foot setback that stipulated it by the UDO. It also allows for reduced landscaping because of the reduced setback. Based on the location of the proposed sign and the way the right-of-way has been created, staff believes that this is an agreeable amendment to the ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have that's not covered in the staff report.
So this sign is in compliance, but because of a right-of-way taking, it's now not in compliance?
No, this is a, this is a, when the Retreat at Moore's Plan Development ordinance was originally proposed and adopted, there were a number of waivers that were requested. However, signage was not one of them. When the permit application came in for the sign, it was discovered that there really is no place for a sign that meets the 10-foot setback from the right-of-way because of the right-of-way line, as well as some easements through there. So there's no place to put a compliant sign. It is compliant in terms of size and height, just not the 10-foot setback requirement from the right-of-way and then the landscaping that's required in a five-foot radius all the way around the base of the sign.
Thank you. Just curious, Mr. Unger, if you could clarify why, why this doesn't stop at the Plan Commission? Why it came all the way to the council?
Because it's a, sorry, because it's an amendment to...
Effectively a zoning ordinance, because it was adopted as an ordinance, so those amendments need to come to the council, like an amendment to a zoning ordinance or a zoning map change.
Thank you. Ms. Stephens?
Mr. President? The line of sight issues have been addressed with the...
That is not a problem, yes. No, they do comply with that.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 66-11-24.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 66-11-24 in a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wildes?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance 67-11-24 and ordinance amending ordinance 25-04-21 for the Maryland Woods Plan Development regarding subdivision sign placement.
Move to introduce. Second.
Amy Stephens.
Thank you. This ordinance is also an amendment to an adopted Plan Development ordinance for the Maryland Woods subdivision. Again, when the Plan Development ordinance was originally proposed and adopted, no sign waivers were asked for with that amendment. Again, with the submission of a land use permit to place two subdivision signs, or one subdivision sign, rather, it was determined that there was no, again, viable place to put the sign because of the right-of-way configuration, as well as there is a water main easement in the location where a sign would be. So they are, again, asking for a reduction in the setback from the right-of-way line, as well as a reduction in the required landscaping square footage around the base of the sign.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 67-11-24.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 67-11-24 in a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Ms. Wildes?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Counsel to consider Resolution RC 5024, a resolution amending the adopted comprehensive master plan, include an updated thoroughfare plan. Joyce Angel.
This is a resolution to adopt an updated thoroughfare plan for the City of Noblesville. The thoroughfare plan is a part of our comprehensive master plan, and it is a collaboration between planning and the engineering departments. This plan does designate roadway system for major roadways within our community. The thoroughfare plan is simply a graphic illustration of a long-range plan that identifies general alignments, functional classification, minimum right-of-way widths for both existing and proposed roadways within our jurisdiction. The thoroughfare plan is used when we're widening or for new streets that may require federal, state, or local funding. The plan is used for maintenance priorities also, future utility relocations, and the acquisition of new rights of way for future widening and that are implemented through the zoning and permitting processes. The last time we updated the thoroughfare plan was in 2021. This update does include roads that have been completed, proposed new roads within our jurisdiction, completed and proposed roundabouts, and general alignment of any new proposed roads. The Plan Commission did hold a public hearing and sent it to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions.
A quick question about the road. I know this came of Plan Commission. What's the road out of Innovation Mile that connects north to south, shown in the bottom right-hand corner?
The one that's in Crystal Creek?
Yeah, yep.
Yes. That basically, although that road is shown as part of that master plan, we do have a note that it will be restudied at a time that there would actually be an alignment.
Thank you. Any other questions?
There's not necessarily a timeframe attached to some of these. These are just kind of goals that we see that we're going to need to address at some point, correct?
That is correct. It is just a graphic, you know, basically illustration of long-range plans.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve Resolution RC 50-24.
Second.
Motion to approve Resolution RC 5024 in a second. This is a hand vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Thank you.
Counsel to consider Resolution RC 5124, a resolution recognizing certain employees of the City of Noblesville. Aaron Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I get the honor tonight of recognizing some of our public safety officials. Though there are, I counted on the list, and there are 57 celebrating anniversaries ranging from five to 35 years between our City Court, Police Department, and our Fire Department.
between our city court, police department, and our fire department. And I'll, you know, move them into the record in a second, but I just wanted to note that of those 57, 30 have been with us for more than 20 years, which I think is an incredible, incredible accomplishment. It just shows the dedication that so many of those men and women have toward communities. So with that, I will move that we approve Resolution RC-50-24 and enter those employees' names into the minutes.
Second.
Motion to approve Resolution RC-50-24 and enter the employees' names into the minutes. In a second, this is a hand vote. All who favor raise your right hand. Nine o. Counsel comments. No counsel comments. We are adjourned.